Hi, I'm John Malice. Welcome to this live edition of Connect With Me on the showroom floor at Ventura TV on this Thursday morning. Today, we're talking city politics with a local city councilman representing District 5. That's the district we're in right here at Ventura TV, Southeast Fresno, 436 ME TV option 11. Connect With Me starts right now. All right, back here on the program on a Thursday morning in a beautiful downtown Fresno. We're just not too far from downtown. We're actually in southeast Fresno at Ventura TV. Connect With Me on ME TV Fresno. Let's go right to the graphic. Comcast Channel 375. Get right into the program today because there's a lot to talk about. You already know what stations you're watching, 13.1 or 43.6 over-the-air broadcast with an antenna. Then, another over-the-air broadcast replay comes up at 2:00 in the afternoon, 13.6 YouTube, 8:00 tonight on 4.6 Biz TV. Now, keep in mind, folks, this is all over-the-air broadcast, right? This is with an antenna. Then, later on, if you want to go to YouTube, just go to youtube.com/meTVFresno. Scroll down where it says uploads, and you can catch all the broadcasts that we've done here. All right, let's get right into today's program because there's so much to talk about with the councilman that represents this district. We're glad he is in the building today. He's been here before, but certainly, this is the perfect time because there's so much on his plate that he wants to talk about as well. And one of the things that he wants to talk about, because he was a former Fresno School Board member, is DACA. You might remember, just a couple of days ago on Tuesday, President Donald Trump decided to do away with DACA. Okay, what's DACA? I'll just explain it in like five seconds. It's Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals. It's a program that was designed and developed, of course, by President Obama. He signed an executive orders order at the time. So anybody who was like 16 or younger that came here illegally as an immigrant, they could stay so long as they remained in school, so long as they had a work permit, they were working, maybe they were in the military, and as long as they did not have a criminal record. How many people does this affect across the country? About 800,000. According to the Fresno Bee, there are some 18,000 "dreamers," they call these people, across the Central Valley. That includes Fresno County, Madera County, and Teleri County. How many are here in Fresno? A lot. And a lot of those dreamers go to Fresno State. Check it out.
DACA is an executive order placed in 2012, and it protects families. It protects childhood arrivals. It helps them, protects them for going to school, and it helps them build a better life for themselves.
I don't know much about DACA. I just heard about it today. And all I know is, I believe in education. I believe that immigrants have every right to be in this country, just as much as I do. I strongly believe in educating everyone. And removing that would be a tragedy, so...
If it wasn't for DACA, I wouldn't be standing here right now. I would have committed suicide. But I didn't. I changed. I have a new brother. It's a long story. But if Congress does not act, my brother will be taken away from me. And I don't know what to do after that. Because he's...
Well, I hope the process goes through, but personally, I'm not holding my breath. The United States Congress is, if this juncture is inept, they haven't taken care of business. Basically, in a country, we don't have clear-cut public policy. The Congress has been all over the place.
We knew that DACA was going to be the repeal, or there was going to be an outcome today. So we were just going to try to hold the banner, have signs for people to take pictures with, saying like, "I support DACA," or "Support undocumented students." But as the weekend went along, like, we started communicating with other organizations and other people, faculty members, even the administration and the student government. They all showed up today and...
All right, live in our studio right now is city councilman in District Number 5, Luis Chavez. He's up for reelection next year. This issue is very dear and near to his heart because he's a former member of the Fresno Unified School Board. Now, Luis, welcome to the program. Glad you're here. So DACA now, okay. President Trump says it's eliminated, but he's giving Congress six months to come up with a decent and credible immigration plan. For now, he says, you know, "I love the dreamers, but we have to come up with something new." Is that an acceptable answer from the president or decision?
No, I'm really disappointed in that, and I'll tell you why. I think, you know, he must have a lot more faith in Congress than most Americans do. We see the gritlock that comes out of there, so polarized right now at this time. And so I think it's important for us to recognize the work and the contribution that these students and these young folks have made here in our city. And as you mentioned, you know, earlier, wearing my past hat as a Fresno Unified Board Member, when I got on there four years ago, we actually got a tally, a good count of the amount of students that were in our system. We have about 2,500 to 3,000 DACA students that are here right now.
At Fresno Unified?
At Fresno Unified.
This is the... Wait a second. These are students that are going to school within the Fresno Unified School District? There's 3,000?
About 3,000. It fluctuates a little bit, obviously, because some of them have migrant farmworker parents that move quite a bit, but that's the large population that we serve. These are great kids, hard-working, you know, young individuals that just aspire to have a better life. And I think when we look at them, we look at the face of America. And for me, I think we need to do better. And so I was really disappointed with this decision that came down. I'm hopeful, though, that Congress does act. And I mean, we're talking about DACA specifically, but I think this is a broader term, where we do need to have a comprehensive immigration reform, and hopefully, we can get to that place here in the next six months.
Now, you said you aren't disappointed because, obviously, you served on the school board, so you know, to a certain extent, how education works. How many years did you serve on the board?
Four years there at Fresno Unified.
Four years at Fresno Unified. So do these dreamers that are going to Fresno Unified, or Fresno State for that matter, or any other school in California, or the Central Valley, do they have any reason to be worried, in your estimation?
Well, obviously, you know, with this decision, it just throws a lot of uncertainty into what their future looks like. Right now, they have this process where every two years, they're petitioning to renew it. But I think with, if this does not get renewed, and there's not a solution to this, what do you do, right? I mean, they're working, they're nurses, they're business owners, they're employers, they're servicemen and women.
They're doctors, they're lawyers, whatever.
They're doctors, lawyers, and so they're contributing, right? We know that they contribute $11.2 billion to California's economy.
How much?
$11.2 billion with a B to our local economy.
And where does that stat come from? How do we know that for sure?
So that's actually put together by the State Department of Finance. And they look at, obviously, the professions they're in, the contributions, their economic contributions, purchasing power. And we know that this was a means for them to come out of the shadows and participate in our communities, and they have been. You know, 90% of them are employed or in school. Huge stats. I mean, you don't see that with a lot of demographic groups, but I think for us, we need to do more for them. And I'm hoping that this sparks that conversation to solve this problem long-term.
Right. So that $11.6 billion, or whatever it is, is an accurate figure from the state of California?
Correct.
Okay. So, and that comes from the Department of Finance, you said?
Department of Finance, California. There's been a number of studies actually done. I'm really curious to see what the local one is, as we know we have a large number of them here, but we see them every day in our community, and we have to do, we have to do better for them.
Let me just ask you this, because, like you said, it's a renewable program. Every two years, it's like, you know, you can get your work permit, stay another six months, or two years, or whatever it is. If their DACA status expires prior to March the 5th of next year, they will have until October the 5th of next year to renew that, and then they can stay here for up to... Hang on, caller, put you on hold for a moment here. They can stay through 2019, almost through 2020. Is that satisfactory to... Is that enough time for Congress and the president to sort this out? Now, remember, Democrats and Republicans have to come together on this.
Yeah, and that's been the challenge, right, with DC? But I think that helps, for sure.
That's a pretty good timeframe.
It's a pretty good timeframe, but I think for us, we need to get down to the real issue, which is our broken immigration system. We see a lot of bipartisan work coming out of the Valley. I'm hoping that that translates over to Washington DC, and we get it fixed.
Yeah. Now, remember, yesterday or the day before, after he made that decision, the president came out with a tweet after he said that the Congress has six months. He says, "Congress now has six months to legalize DACA, something the Obama administration was unable to do. If they can't, I will revisit this issue." I have no idea what that means. It almost sounds like he's backtracking, but I want to take this call here.
Neither do I.
Pardon me?
Neither do I.
All right, caller, you're on the air with Luis Chavez. Go ahead.
Yes, I was a DACA child as well, and I went through, got my education, and I'm a teacher in Madera Unified. And, you know, when you're a DACA, when you're in DACA, you've done everything that, really, the United States asks of a person when they want to become a naturalized citizen. You're educated, you've gotten, you know, you've gotten a job, and now they're saying you speak English. Now they're... So really, there's no reason for anybody not to get naturalized. I, as soon as I got my degree and I got my teaching credential, and I was a member of Madera Unified, I got naturalized. You know, they were like, happy to have you. You know, you're a welcome addition to the United States because you're a productive person. But what I don't understand is, why don't all those other DACA youth who have gotten their degrees, or who are now working and have steady jobs, why don't they go and get naturalized? So really, there's, for me, there's a, I feel for those students who are in high school and below, but for those who are, who have gotten out of college and who have, and who have, you know, gotten their steady jobs and so forth, but have not gotten their naturalization, for those students, for those people, I really don't have a whole lot of affection for, because they didn't do it, or they have, you know, apathy. You know, they thought, "Well, I can just stick with DACA for the rest of my life," when really, DACA just helps you get your education, and after that, you really are responsible to get naturalized, just like I did. So I really don't have too much sympathy for those students who went through, got college education, got jobs, but didn't get naturalized. So, you know, they just, they wasted time, and then all of a sudden, it's like, "Oh, wait a minute. Now, what happened?" You know, the president rescinded this act, and Congress may not, you know, may not sign up bail in time, and I'm in, well, tough luck, because you wasted a lot of time in not getting naturalized.
All right, caller, hang on. Go ahead, Luis.
Sure. Well, and I mean, that's a perfect example of somebody that had a process and took advantage of it. And that, I think that's what we're trying to get to for these kids.
And he's a teacher in Madera.
He's a teacher in Madera, which is even better, right? I mean, he has opportunity to share his experience with those kids that are probably on the same boat that he is.
Is he right, though, they should get naturalized?
Oh, absolutely. We should go through the process. I think those young folks should have the naturalization process and a path to citizenship. I don't believe that that's an option for them right now, but, I mean, any venue that helps them get towards that wouldn't help them.
It's totally an option. But with the United States, the naturalization, they ask English, that you are, have a steady job, that you don't have felonies, which a DACA person, that not have any felonies or any misdemeanors for that matter, you have to be, you know, crime-free. And when you are a member of DACA, and then you are accepted as a part of DACA, the Immigration Naturalization Service says, you know, if you go through the whole thing, you are a prime candidate to get naturalized.
Absolutely.
So not enough for doing that, huh?
Yeah. Well, and we should have that available to them. And from what I understand...
Maybe, but let me get this, let me get this out. I just thought of this. Maybe some of them are not aware of that, caller, am I right? Maybe they're not aware that they could be naturalized.
No, they are aware, because you have to sign up for DACA. Right there, you'd know that you are not a naturalized citizen.
So, right when you, right when you sign up for DACA, then you know that you have the opportunity to become naturalized?
Exactly. You know you have the opportunity to get naturalized.
All right.
Because everything that you have, everything that is required of you to enter into DACA is exactly the same thing that is required to get your naturalization, get your citizenship.
Oh, I see what he's saying. Yeah, he's actually correct in what he's explaining with regards to the process of that it will now entail for you to go through the naturalization process. I do know that in 2012, when Congress failed to act on the original Dream Act, that's when the previous president signed the executive order. And now, that was temporary. Obviously, we know that that's dependent on whoever's in the White House. And now, what I think President Trump has done is, he said, "Okay, that's expired now. Congress will act." I don't believe, though, that we should have done it in that context. I think it just threw a lot of uncertainty into the folks. He probably did a depressur Congress.
Really, all Congress has to do is take DACA, the executive order, and add to it the provision that if you have, if you have satisfied all the DACA provisions, that you've gotten your education, you've gotten your job, you have a steady job for a year, you're now a taxpayer, you are criminal-free, you're crime-free, then that, the new congressional provision would say, "Now, you can sign up and be, automatically be naturalized as a citizen."
Yep, 100% agree.
That's really all you have to do.
100% agree.
Just take the executive order, add that provision I just mentioned, and make it a law.
Yep, 100% agree.
That's all you have to do.
Caller, thank you for the input. I appreciate it very much. That's very nice of everybody calling and watching the program. Luis, got to take a break here. 436 ME TV, option 11. We'll talk on the other side of the break just a little bit more about DACA, then we'll move on to Fresno issues. A lot to cover on this day with Luis Chavez. He is a city councilman right here in District 5. Back in a moment.
Well, number one, the compassionate thing to do is to give these kids legal status, let them become citizens. They're all non-felons. They have no other country to go to. They came here as young children. They've lived their life in America, and they would add great value to our country. So that's the right thing to do regarding the kids. In terms of the law, 10 attorney generals filed a lawsuit, excuse me, today suggesting that DACA was unconstitutional. They were going to win in court. DAPA, the legalization of their parents, was struck down by the federal courts. So what prompted this was actions by 10 Republican attorney generals to challenge the constitutionality of DACA. They were going to win, so I think the president made the right decision by giving us six months.
All right, Lindsey Graham, of course, the senator out of South Carolina. And I love his accent, by the way.
Great accent.
I've tried to mimic that, and it's very difficult to do, but it sounds like he's in favor of DACA, but they asked him on the Today Show, they said, "Congressional fix for DACA without funding the border wall." That was his answer. Of course, they're debating all sorts of issues. I think Donald Trump wants it all in one bill. That's the impression that I'm getting, but, and so, I don't know. Donald Trump called DACA "illegal amnesty" during the campaign. He says, "You know, we have people in this country that have dreams, too." Do you agree with that?
No. Obviously, you know, with the campaign season's over, and you say a lot of things during an election cycle, but now I think he has the job of governing and representing everybody in the United States. And I think, I mean, to be honest with you, I think a lot of the folks up in Washington DC understand that and are in agreement with the bipartisan. I think immigration is always a polarizing issue, and our country has been for the last 180-plus years, and it will continue to be. But I think at the end of the day, folks out there in our country, in our community, want to get to a real-world solution. And to me, that's a comprehensive immigration reform. This is really much more of a Band-Aid, but a very important part of that process.
All right, in the news today, before I get to the call, 15 states, including Washington D., suing over this. This could end up in the Supreme Court. You never know.
I think that's where it's headed, to be honest with you. I think, you know, you'll have so many plaintiffs in the situation that it will be a Supreme Court case.
Caller, short on time. Please go ahead.
Mr. Chavez, let me ask you a real quick question.
Sure.
Senator Trump did it really easy for himself by putting everything to Congress, as far as that. And the thing is, that the only reason he did it is for political reasons, okay? Because of, you know, the deal that he's looking good at the deal that he and the Democrats did, that the GOP or the, you know, Republicans don't like what he's doing behind their backs, but at the same time, if they don't agree with him or with the Democrats, they're going to lose a lot of seats, okay?
Sure.
The people who are here, there's nothing you can do.
Okay, thank you, caller. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
12 million undocumented individuals in the country right now. We're specifically focusing on DACA. And again, this is the topic of discussion, but, I mean, we just have a broken immigration system in our country.
Lee Brand, and this kind of relates to the city council. Now, you're a sitting city councilman, up for reelection next year. Mayor Lee Brand had said, and told the Fresno Bee, refused, obviously, to name Fresno, and here's Lee Brand right there, our mayor, as a sanctuary city. I don't know if you agree with that or not, but he basically, you know, it has to do with, you know, the money that we get from the federal government, he says. And he agrees that, okay, you've given Congress a six-month window, according to Lee Brand, that should be enough time, but he's not going to name Fresno as a sanctuary city. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, even the definition of sanctuary city, right? Like, what does that mean? The federal government hasn't even come out with guidelines on what that means. There's a couple of bills working their way through the Sacramento Legislature. If you ask me if the sanctuary city is provisioned in there with welcoming our immigrants and making sure that they're taken care of, I would say yes. If you tell me that it means that we're not going to work collectively with law enforcement on making sure that folks that break the law are taken care of, then I would say no, right? So I think the lack of clarification on what that means...
On what the...
On what sanctuary means. You have cities across the state that wrestle with that definition, but...
Do you think Fresno should be a safe haven?
I do, I do. I think we should be a welcoming city. We're full of immigrants. Immigrants built this city, built this nation, and we should be welcoming. However, we should have provisions in there to get rid of and have a due process for those that break the law. We absolutely, I absolutely would not support anything related to those criminals.
So respectfully, you disagree with the mayor. It should be a sanctuary city.
Well, no, I didn't say that either. I didn't say, a sanctuary city, to me, is not clear what it means. There's confusion on what that definition is. Now, the federal government will come back with some guidelines on what that means, and I think that'll give us some clarity on what we do. Because keep in mind that we do get federal dollars for police, fire, emergency preparedness. We don't want to, obviously, jeopardize that, but we want to make sure that we're welcoming and make sure that our immigrants here feel welcomed.
Right. And so, let me get this call here real quick. Hang on, caller, get to you in a second here. So basically, you know, Lee Brand says this is not a sanctuary city, yet he's not going after people either.
Sure.
So it's kind of like a safe haven without naming it a sanctuary city. So you agree with that policy?
Yeah, I do, I do.
Because he's not telling police, "Jerry, go after these people."
No, 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 absolutely not.
He's laying back and saying, "Okay," but...
We actually have a policy in place that does not have our police department ask about immigration status.
Correct. When you pull somebody over.
Right, correct. And I think that's a good rule to have in place, because what will happen if we don't have that will be, folks that normally would report a crime will not come forward. We've seen that already with the Temple out there, and we don't want that.
So it's not bad, Luis. I mean, this can be a safe haven. We're not going after those, but yet, we're not losing our federal dollars.
Correct, correct.
So we're kind of eating, you know, having our cake and eating it, too?
In a certain way, I mean, and that's what government should be doing, right? We have to, obviously, you know, protect our communities and making sure that we're at the forefront, but we also have to balance that, too.
Good deal. Caller, we're short on time here. Got to get to other topics, but go ahead.
Yeah, Attorney General Judge Sessions, when asked what guidelines they're going to give about sanctuary cities, he told, he said, "The federal government is not going to give any guidelines in terms of sanctuary cities, because the federal government doesn't recognize sanctuary cities." Sanctuary cities were started by activists for, you know, for immigration reform. You know, it was never by the federal government. So they're never gonna... If Congressman Chavez there is going to wait and see if the federal government comes up with guidelines in terms of what a sanctuary city is and what is not a sanctuary city, Mr. Chavez, they're going to be waiting there a very long time.
Yeah, but the federal government has also said, and Donald Trump has also said, that he will take funding away from cities like San Francisco that are sanctuary cities. So the government has labeled it to a certain extent.
Well, no, they, well, what they're saying, the federal government is saying is that we don't recognize sanctuary cities. And if you try and go against federal law, then you're going to get penalized.
They don't recognize sanctuary cities, but at the same time, they're naming San Francisco and other cities like Chicago sanctuary cities. You're not going to get your federal dollars. So it's kind of like talking out of both sides of your mouth, in a way.
San Francisco and Los Angeles and so forth, they are saying, "We're not going to abide by federal law." And what the federal government is saying, "If you don't want to abide by federal law, that's fine."
Okay.
The separation of federal government and state.
Yeah.
But if you want federal funding, good luck.
Okay, all right. All right, caller, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Let's take a quick break here and change topics now. We're going to talk about the local police department and what Luis Chavez has in store in the planning stages for southeast Fresno. 436 ME TV, option 11. Back in just a moment.
...now, the mayor of Fresno, bridging the gap between the community and the Fresno Police Department. KC 24's Gregory Woods joining us now. So Greg, not only did he announce the hire for the Office of Independent Review, he is also announcing who is on this newly-formed Public Safety Advisory Board.
That is absolutely correct. The Office of Independent Review used to be out of state, but now, the new hire not only lives in the city and works more closely with the community and the department, but he will also work with the department, we will also work with the Public Safety Advisory Board.
Please welcome our new independent police reviewer, John Gliata.
This is the man tasked with the job to hold officers accountable and help build trust with the community. He only answers to the mayor and city manager.
They are not coaching me or telling me what's hands-off, or make sure that you don't touch this area here, or answer it in this fashion, because we want to make sure that they're happy. They haven't said that at all, so, and that's one of the things that intrigued me about this position.
Gliata will use his 30 years of law enforcement experience to review officer-involved shootings and community complaints. The mayor says he comes with an impressive resume, a veteran of the FBI offices in Sacramento and Washington, where he helped handle internal affairs, including officer-involved shootings. Gliata says he'll have an open-door policy when it comes to public transparency.
If you have an issue, feel free to come forward, and we're going to be very receptive to that.
Gliata will also work with the Public Safety Advisory Board. It's nine community members from every district in the city who represents their neighborhood.
It's my ethnic group that sometimes, you know, they have concerns, and I could be the voice and bring back and inform them.
You know, I really respect the fact that Fresno is being progressive and, you know, having this advisory board, especially when you see policing in communities kind of at odds with one another.
Gliata hopes to fix that with the help of police, the advisory board, and the community.
I'm not here to make friends, I'm not here to make enemies. I'm just here to do what's right.
And Fresno Police Chief Jerry Dyer is not in town today, so he was not able to comment on the mayor's announcement. The president of the Fresno Police Association, Damon Kurtz, says they had some concerns at first, but they're in support of the mayor's effort. Reporting in the studio, Gregory Woods, KC 24 Local News, That Matters.
All right, John Gliata, remember that name. What's there not to like about this story? That just took place last week.
Yeah.
Is there anything not to like about it?
No, a strong resume, obviously his experience speaks for itself. I think he'll be a great addition to the city of Fresno.
Yeah, and he was an analyst for Fresno County Sheriff's Office, 27 years, 27 years with the FBI, and he has a national reputation. And so this safety board is called, the official title is Citizens Public Safety Advisory Board. What is that board to do? What's their job?
So their job will essentially, and it's put together by the, by the mayor, will be to essentially give input from a community member's point of view and...
It's like a panel, or?
Uh, it is, it's somewhat of a, of an advisory ad hoc committee, where they will have, present these recommendations and, and, and forward them to the mayor and consequently to the city council. I think it's a great, a part of the law enforcement new model, so to speak, the community-based policing, that model that the, the chief and our department has transitioned into. And I think this will be a critical piece on how we go about formulating policy for, for law enforcement locally.
And this will help clear up too, some of the concerns about police shootings that do take place, officer-involved shootings that do take place in, in the city of Fresno. There have been quite a few, and there have been a lot of protests over it, and people uncertain as to whether or not those are just... So this board and Gliata will look over this board, and they will investigate these shootings? That's part of it?
That's, that's part of it. I think the bigger piece of this will be make sure that the community feels involved and participatory in this process. That's gonna be critical, which is why you see a lot of the names that you see on that list. I think that'll be very helpful for our new police auditor to work with.
Yeah. Hang on caller, we'll get to you in a moment. I wanna mention a couple of the names, Debbie Hunsucker, Avis Braggs, you mentioned Monica Diaz, who you know, who's a business owner right here in the city of Fresno, or Diaz, yes. Jim Parks, a pastor at West Fresno Christian Center, they're all part of this panel. And two students, Michael Kuwang and Clifford Williams III. So you got a couple of students on the panel, and that's, that's good because it, it shows a broad, you know, you're appealing to a broad section of people here in the community, am I right?
Absolutely, and I think the mayor's done a great job of putting that together. I know that a lot of work went into that, and I think what we'll see is a better relationship between our law enforcement community and our community out there in southwest, southeast, across our city.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, you know, so the mayor thus far has done a good job with this. Before I get to the call, do you like the overall job he's done so far?
I do, I think he's done a, a, just a phenomenal job. He, he, he came in and he just hit the ground running. I think it was helpful that he was a council member, came from the private sector, understands the dynamics, had great working relationships with everybody, and I think the projects that he's accomplished in this short amount of time has, has, has been because of that.
You like his work ethic?
I do.
Okay, caller, quickly, you're on the air with Luis Chavez, quickly.
Yes, I, I don't know, it sounds like this committee is kinda like a toothless committee, where, you know, they can make all the recommendations they want, but if the chief doesn't wanna go along with them, you know, he'll throw them in the wastebasket, you know? So, I mean, I don't see, this committee has, you know, a whole lot of clout or can make a whole lot of difference in, 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 in the, in how the city manages its police department. And, and another thing I just wanna say, I have a child, and, and Fresno Unified, and I don't like the way the police department keeps going over there to Fresno Unified and keeps stealing their money. I mean, my child has to, I gotta keep paying money for my child for, for resources, for their, for their classroom, and, and the, and the police, and the, and the police department goes to Fresno Unified and asks for a million dollars for their, their shot spotter. I mean, how can that be?
Okay, all right caller, thank you very much.
It's a very important protection, like they're supposed to.
Gotcha, thank you. So, 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 I imagine maybe the police chief might not be happy with this. I haven't talked to him, I don't know if you have. Is he, is he satisfied with this board? Is he satisfied with John Gliata, do you know?
I think, I think the, the chief was most definitely consulted, um, you know, along with the mayor on, on how to structure this. The last thing we wanna do is, is set up a, a structure that, that is not gonna be workable for our chief. I mean, he's ultimately responsible for the safety of all of our residents. We wanna make sure that he has a tremendous amount of input, and he does. I think the, the management style that the chief has has been very efficient and effective here. We just had a meeting with him, the Merchants Association here on Kings Canyon with him, and he is very thorough about what they're doing, the stats, uh, crime going on here in our community, and, and we need to make sure that we have that for him.
Okay, I wanna roll the videotape before we go to break here, Carrie. It's called Wild Scene, and no sundown, we're gonna talk over this, and I wanna look at the Fresno Police Department and talk about it just before the break here. This is last year during the Donald Trump visit here in Fresno, some protesters out there, Jerry Dyer drew some praise, uh, they obviously had the riot team out there from all different agencies. Clovis and Sanger and Kermit, Sheriff's Department, they were all out there. But the Fresno Police Department, um, you know, they just recently signed a contract, but they get, they do get paid less than Clovis and Dinuba. I think the average is about $90,000 a year on the high end with benefits in retirement. Is it enough? Should they be making more than Clovis or Dinuba?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, you look at their workload and, and the kind of calls that they respond to, and it's very different. Things are a little bit more quieter in Clovis and surrounding cities. We're a big urban area, over half a million people. The calls they deal with are, are very dangerous. I was reminded of that not that long ago when I had an incident at my home, and the split-second decisions that they make is just very challenging, and they should be compensated more to keep them here so that they don't go to surrounding police departments.
And the caller mentioned Spot Shotter. We spent a lot of money on that, chief likes it, do you like it?
I do, I actually was one of the, um, board members with Fresno Unified that was the lead on supporting that last year. I think it, it most definitely saved lives, particularly when we had that incident of the gentleman, Mohammed, that shot some folks out there.
Three people.
Three people, and they were able to track that individual with the Shot Spotter system. And God knows, we, we would've had a, a higher body count if that wouldn't have been in place. So, we do need to expand it and be strategic about the areas that we're, we're putting it in, and I think we'll do that.
Quickly, uh, just one other quick thing, a quick answer on this one. Will the chief listen to this advisory board, this new advisory board? And will he take the recommendations? In other words, the advisory board's not there to order the chief to do anything, or to, or to pass judgment, but will he take their recommendations?
I think he will. You know, I've worked with, with the chief for about eight years now, he's a very good listener, very thoughtful a person, and I think he, he listens to all parties and then makes the best decision for the city, and I think he'll do that.
All right, Luis Chavez is here. Hey, I've got a list of things that George Hostetter wrote about in CB Observer. You have a lot going on here in southeast Fresno. We're gonna take time to talk about some of the projects that are positive that are going on right here. And believe it or not, uh, if you wanna drive by Ventura TV, you know what? We're gonna have BRT here, right? Drive right by, we'll talk about that in just a moment. 436 ME TV, option 11, a lot going on in southeast Fresno. A lot of businesses opening up, so a lot of positives going on here in our city. 436 ME TV, option 11, call in, got an open phone line, back in a moment.
When you're looking for KitchenAid innovation and quality, who has the answers, the selection, the price? Ventura TV Appliance. With billions in nationwide appliance buying power, more than Home Depot and Best Buy combined, we'll help you save. Our low prices on Energy Star-qualified KitchenAid appliances save you energy and money, and pay no interest on select models when paid in full within 12 months. Ventura TV Appliance, serving you since 1951.
Frigidaire. It means the first electric refrigerator. The first compact electric range. Now, there's the Frigidaire Gallery Range with Symmetry Double Ovens. It's designed to cook multiple dishes at multiple temperatures, so you can prepare the entire meal at the same time. Frigidaire, over 90 years of legendary innovation. See the full line of Frigidaire appliances at Ventura TV Electronics and Appliances.
All right, I wanna give Luis plenty of time here to talk about some of these projects, but first I wanna get to the marijuana issue. Roll the videotape on marijuana, and quickly, last week there was a vote, three weeks ago there was a vote, so two votes in the last month or so on marijuana. Basically, uh, the board voted four to three. Luis Chavez, Brettafeld, Capriolio, and Brandow, not Brand, but Brandow, voted to ban recreational dispensaries, marijuana dispensaries here in the city of Fresno. A lot of people were in favor of it, but you guys voted against it. However, um, you're in favor of bringing up the issue, a resolution that would include medical dispensaries here in the city of Fresno. Why not recreational?
Well, recreational has been a problem for jurisdictions that have implemented that. I'll tell you that, my first two years on the school board, I spent it working with our police department, shutting down drug houses near our schools, and I think I counted a total of eight of them. That's just my position where I'm at, recreational. But I will tell you that I've had subsequent conversations with folks that use it for medicinal purposes. A lot of our veterans that have PTSD, children that have epilepsy attacks. And so I think we need to find a, a solution for them so that they don't have to go into some sketchy places and try to find this. So we're working through that, and I'm hopeful that we'll get to a solution that we can have the council support and the mayor's support as well.
Okay, so you're against recreational, but you're gonna, you're gonna bring up the resolution when on medical dispensaries?
I anticipate in the next couple of months, we'll have something, we're working through with our legal folks, with looking at some other best practices for other jurisdictions, and we'll come up with something.
Would that be a proposition or proposal that would, would eventually pass the council? A better chance at passing?
I think it will, I think it will. I think obviously the details will, will determine that, but I think all my colleagues, that even the ones that voted banning the recreational, we'll keep an open mind, they, they've said that publicly.
A wild guess, Brandow and Brettafeld are the two you're concerned with, right?
Well, I, I, I think they'll need a little work.
You gotta work on them.
But we'll see if we can get, if we can get there, but hey...
A little conference, just have a conference.
But you need four, so magical number is, is four.
Hey, you're doing some good work here. You're up for reelection next year. According to George Hostetter, you got about $31,000 in your coffers here. You're working with Mark Scizari, all right? He's one of the top political consultants here. Just quickly on that, um, you expect to win next year?
I do, I mean, I think at the end of the day, you know, folks wanna see what kinda work you're doing, and, and your, your results should speak for themselves. I don't believe in doing a press conference every time we accomplish something, but I think we'll have an opportunity next year to communicate the work we've done, and, and people see it every day as they drive through Kings Canyon, they drive through their neighborhoods, and I'm confident we will.
All right, whenever you talk BRT, Bus Rapid Transit, everybody thinks of Manchester Center, Clint Olivier. Why don't they think of Luis Chavez? You're doing it right in front of Ventura TV here. Talk about the project, talk about BRT along Kings Canyon.
Absolutely, I think this is gonna be a, a big plus for the area. We'll have bus service every 10 minutes going through the corridor.
And one of the stops will be in front of our store here?
One of, one of the stops will be in front of the store, which will help. Obviously, we wanna have eyes on a lot of our, our merchants and their businesses. That'll help with the traffic. People don't know this, but we get 1.2 million visitors each year to the Kings Canyon Ventura Corridor, Fairgrounds, Mong New Year, Home and Garden Show, there's a lot of traffic, and this is gonna help with that.
Wait a minute, run that by me again, how many?
1.2 million visitors come through the Kings Canyon Ventura Corridor every single year.
Each year?
Each year.
And, and what's the biggest reason for that? Would that be the fair?
The fair's a big part of that, we also have Mong New Year, we have the Home and Garden Show twice a year. We also have gun shows that we have here in the fair, but it's a hub. It's a hub for our community, and this is gonna help with putting more eyes on our, on our businesses and, and moving some more services and economic development here for the area. I also wanna mention that we just secured $500-plus thousand to do a specific plan for the older parts of, of southeast, including the areas around the fairgrounds, all the way up until Peach Avenue and feeding into the downtown area. So there's a, there's a big master plan going on for what this area will look like. And I wanna, I should take the opportunity to invite some of the viewers, if they'd like to apply to be on the committee, to outline that. Contact our office, you could send an email to district5@fresno.gov, and we'll process it.
How about the telephone number, 621 something?
621-7854.
7854, so that is the Fresno, Southeast Fresno specific plan, that's the $500,000, and that's gonna go to improve some of the neighborhoods in and around the fairgrounds, right?
Absolutely, so what I've done is I, I put certain neighborhoods on, on schedules, and we've actually just repaved some neighborhoods over by St. Anthony Clarit on Chestnut and Church. And we're gonna move our way westward and, and focus on those older neighborhoods. They need some resources.
All right, I do wanna mention the, the crime stats, and the reason I'm going to is, is cause I wanna talk about the new headquarters in southeast Fresno, it's a new policing district. We do have 42 homicides here in the city of Fresno, that's up by, um, that's up by a lot. Last year we only had 21 at this time a year ago, but overall violent crime is down, according to Fresno Police Department. And southeast Fresno, just alone, you've had 12 homicides, a lot of homicides, but overall, the crime rate, violent crime is down by 15.1% in southeast Fresno. Yeah, you still have rape, you still have robbery, you still have assault, you still have homicides, but you have that citywide, but down overall in southeast Fresno, yet $6 million. Where's the $6 million coming from to build a new headquarters for the southeast policing district? And when is that gonna take place, and how will that help this area? So kind of a three-part question.
Absolutely, so the $6 million will come from the city's general fund, and, and we've saw, we've seen investments in other parts of the city with their police stations, Manchester, the Tower District, now it's southeast's turn, and...
It's gonna be over by Talarian Clovis.
Talarian Clovis, what, what that'll do is that'll help streamline the, the calls, the, the way we process those priority one, two, and three calls. But another piece of that, that, that we haven't talked about is that we're, we're gonna be opening up a series of satellite offices along the Kings Canyon Ventura Corridor, to allow our officers to be stationed there and respond more quickly to a lot of those calls.
All right, I'm gonna take this call, but you're gonna have to hang on caller. You're also going to do what with the old juvenile hall building on Ventura?
So, the great news, it was just sold to some investors from Kern County, and we're actually in discussions with a company that wants to put in a, a call center there.
Like a data processing center?
Data processing, 200-plus jobs that'll come to this area, and that'll be helpful too with all the investments that are going on in, in southeast.
And before we get to this call, Caesar Chavez Foundation's long-planned apartment complex, 100 units, where's that gonna be?
That's going over on Peach and Kings Canyon, across the street from the Walmart. That old vacant lot that was just being used as a dumping ground will now be a, a multifamily housing for seniors, and it'll have a community center right in the middle of it for services as well.
Okay, caller, quickly, you're on with Luis Chavez, a lot more to talk about, a lot going on in southeast Fresno. In fact, 15 new businesses opening up in the last year or so here?
Absolutely, we've, we've kept, we have a, a nice little counter on our, at our office on how many businesses open up, how many jobs are producing. I've been very aggressive about going out and recruiting and talking to these big companies. I send out a series of letters soliciting them to come to Fresno. We're gonna keep doing that, I'm actually redoubling that effort. I will be in Los Angeles next month, recruiting a lot of those businesses to come to southeast. We have a lot of growth opportunities for them.
Yeah, okay, caller, you're on the air with Luis Chavez, go ahead.
Well, you just said a second ago that you're pretty much gonna win the election next time. How's that if you don't even know who the contenders are? I'm running against you, I've got a big painter, give me $100 paintings.
Well, hey, more than welcome, that's why we have election cycles, you're more than welcome to throw your hat in the ring, and we'll see what the voters say.
Yeah, I mean, anybody who runs, they're not, you're not gonna hear them say, oh, I think I'm gonna lose. I mean, of course, anybody who runs for office... Right, no, but, but, but I mean, I'm right in terms of, you know, if you're gonna run for office, you have to have the confidence and, and know that you have people behind you, and you have the money, and you have the right campaign.
Well, at the end of the day, people will judge you on the work you've done in your community. And, and that's what happens every election cycle, and, you know, the individual that called in, he's more than welcome to do that, and, you know, the voters will answer that question loud and clear.
Right, thank you caller, I appreciate it, thank you for watching. All right, take a quick break here, 436 ME TV, option 11, a lot more to talk about that's going on in southeast Fresno, in this district number five, back in just a moment.
When you like Ventura TV appliance on Facebook, it's nice. But when you love the KitchenAid appliances we deliver, it's even better. Our website is cool, and it's a good place to start. But you really should touch the merchandise before you buy. Save big with KitchenAid. Right now, get up to a $1,000 prepaid MasterCard when you purchase select KitchenAid appliances. Get the best selection, price, and service in town without waiting. Come into Ventura TV Appliance and touch the merchandise today.
Frigidaire. We introduce the first home freezer. The first pulsator agitator washer. And now we introduce the Frigidaire Orbit Clean Dishwasher, designed with a unique wash arm that gives you four times more water coverage for a consistently better clean. Frigidaire, over 90 years of legendary innovation. See the full line of Frigidaire appliances at Ventura TV Electronics and Appliances.
Back here with Luis Chavez, and so a lot of talk about, you know, obviously this, this southeast service water treatment plant, the project, a quarter of a billion dollars. Okay, a lot of people have asked, including Doug Vegem, he's been on this program before, and Doug's a great guy, I'm sure you know him well.
Super sharp, super sharp guy.
Super sharp guy, not too many smarter than Doug Vegem. You gotta get up pretty early to, to outsmart this guy, I mean, you do. But he's questioned whether or not we need this.
I think we do, and, and, and whether we need it now or in 10, 15 years, something that's coming down the pipeline that's gonna be very important, critical for our area is what's called Sigma, and that's a state law that's gonna require cities and municipalities to specifically outline how much water you're pumping out of the aquifer, and how much water you're gonna pump back in. So that's gonna put Fresno in a very good position.
So what does this water treatment plan do?
So what it'll do is essentially treat the, the water and repurpose it, and it'll allow our allotments to yield bigger gains for our area. And, and for us, it's gonna be great because it's in southeast, you need a reliable water supply for growth, residential, commercial business, and that's gonna be a big, big plus for southeast Fresno.
Okay, and so, so one of the concerns is, and I've heard this before, is you know what happened in northeast Fresno, Lee Brand's old district six, right? The mixing of the groundwater with the, the, you know, the surface water, and how people got the corroded pipes, and now they're, you know, now their whole system at their house has to be replaced thousands of dollars. to be replaced thousands of dollars. That's what you're talking about. So how's that going to work out? Because now you're mixing, again, you may be mixing for these people in southeast and there's a whole project planned out there with homes, businesses, schools, a whole development in southeast Fresno. How are you going to fix that problem? Mixing groundwater with surface water?
Great question. So one of the things that we're doing is we're actually going into every single neighborhood that's going to receive that water before the water comes and we're actually testing what that water will do to those pipes, the pipes that feed into the homes. And so we've taken samples from the older neighborhoods, from the semi-new neighborhoods and the new neighborhoods to give us an idea of what that will do. And we've got that issue pretty resolved and we're going to keep running some more tests on it before the water hits those homes.
When you say you have it pretty resolved, in what way?
Well, the mixture, the additives that we put into it, the calcium levels and all that, you know, the scientific formulas though that our technicians use, that's what we're going to have to calibrate. But our Public Utilities Department has been doing a great job under the leadership of Tommy Escada and I just had this conversation with him not that long ago. And so we'll have what that'll look like for the residents before that water actually goes out.
Will you have public meetings to discuss all this, what you found in those discoveries with the testing?
From what I understand, there's some litigation still going on. I can't go into the details, but what I will tell you is that once that is resolved, absolutely, the community will know exactly what went on.
Yeah, okay. So that's, when's that plant going to come on board? Do you know? Is it 2018, 1920?
It'll be the latter part of 2018 that the first homes will start to get the water. Obviously, it's in southeast, so we'll have some of the homes that'll be on that area, get the water first and we're going to monitor that very closely.
All right. Is that all part of the southeast growth area, part of Sega?
It's part of it. I think, you know, the city of Fresno about 20 years ago developed that plan and then there was a shift with the new general plan. That's going to happen, but what I foresee happening is that happening in the next 10, 15 years. And realistically, southeast Fresno is poised for growth. We have all these investments going on with not just water, but with transportation and it's going to be a good thing for our residents because it's time, right? We have that, have to have those amenities that North Fresno has and Fancher Creek come in here and we'll have that available to our residents.
And what about Huntington Boulevard? It's one of the most historic areas in all of Fresno.
It's beautiful.
It is beautiful. Are we doing enough for Huntington Boulevard?
Absolutely. So one of the things we did this past year, actually about a year and a half ago, is we actually designated Huntington Boulevard a park. That wasn't the case before and we did it working with our residents here on Huntington. What that means is, if you recall, when the governor came down with the drought decree, that was left to just go, you know, brown and it would just look terrible. So we brought that back. It's beautiful lush green. We're actually working on redoing some of the old lamps along the corridor and also as restriping some of our places there, but it's the crown jewel of southeast Fresno and we have to make sure that we keep that in place.
Yeah. And how are you in contact with residents there? For example, Penny Raven, who's been on this program before.
She's great. She's great. Absolutely, the resident. So I actually live on Huntington and so I talk a lot to my neighbors and we have conversations and what's funny is sometimes they just stop by and address some of the concerns that they have and that's great because it gives you a good pulse of what's going on.
Right. And so we need to preserve that, that area and even if we need to pour a little more money into it, huh?
Oh, absolutely. What'll happen is we'll be eligible for some grants coming down the pipeline. Our office has been monitoring that and we're going to be going after those aggressively through the city of Fresno.
Okay. In terms of growth, what's your selling point? Like you're going to Los Angeles, so your selling point is, I'm a council member in southeast Fresno, district number five, the city of Fresno. Here's what's going on in our area. What's your main selling point to some of these businesses? You're going to be going to LA here soon.
Absolutely. So one of the first things, reliable water supply, transportation system, our roads accessibility, highway systems, 180, 99, 41.
168.
168 that feed right into some of the main arteries that they're looking for. That's a big selling point.
Will you mention the southeast growth?
Oh, absolutely.
And BRT?
They do. And one of the things that our office is currently working on is, because they want to know, how much discretionary spending does that area have and what type of business comes in? And so we're actually working on a market analysis for southeast to communicate that so that way I can come in and say, hey, this is the purchasing power of the residents there. What kind of businesses can go in there? And we've, as you see, we have the General Dollar Store that just opened right down the street. We have the new car wash that's coming down there. We have the dental place, the insurance company that's right here down the street. And so they're looking for those opportunities because the economy's picking up, but the Central Valley is always the first to feel the slump and the last to recover. We're recovering now and I think we need to capitalize on that and really diversify what kind of services we offer here in southeast.
You know, there's so much going on in the news these days, especially around the country. You have so much going on politically speaking. What's your main concern here in the city of Fresno right now? I know you're talking about economic growth. Is it crime? Is it equality for people? Is it discrimination? Is it, what's top of mind? What's number one on your mind for the city of Fresno? As you look around the country and see all these other problems that maybe we don't necessarily have here in the city of Fresno?
Three things.
Okay.
Jobs, jobs, jobs. That's the biggest thing that I think we can do as elected officials because when people are working, they don't have time to, you know, do other things. They don't fall into the traps of substance abuse, of domestic violence. I think that's the most important thing that any elected official can do. Economic development and jobs and that's what we're focusing on.
Let's put up the picture of George Ann White. She is the chief of staff or was of Allen Autry, Mayor Ashley Swearingen as well. Now she's in the Public Works area, but she's leaving City Hall after what seems like a lifetime. She was like the gatekeeper as the CV Observer, Jim Barros called her just recently here in the last couple of days. George Ann White, a staple at City Hall. She's leaving. Two questions, why and will her loss be felt and in what way?